I want to thank you all for being here this evening. This is a public hearing, a public meeting regarding our redesign of the Rome bus system. I hope everyone has a chance to sign in. Cue the sign in sheet and also if you have a copy of the presentation, what is in the handout is exactly what's up here. So I know the font is kind of small, so I want to make sure people had the ability to follow this as we go along. I'm going to go through a presentation, go through this. I would ask that you hold any questions to the end of the presentation, when at that point we'll have the ability for people to make public comment, if you want to go on the official record for what you hear today. And also if you have any questions, we'll be more than happy to answer those questions. This is being recorded, it will go on our website afterwards for other individuals, because the public comment period is going to extend for a couple more weeks. So we will, at that point, in a couple of weeks, we will close the public comment period. All the information will be gathered, presented to our board, and the board will then make a determination of what we're going to do going forward. I'd also like to introduce our board chairman, Nick Leno, and also our deputy CEO, Christopher Tough. And they are representing the board and management here at this public hearing. So with that, I think I'll kick this off. By the way, my name is Steve Kegel, I'm the Vice President of Communications and Business Planning at Centro. I oversee our route system, communications plans. I've been with the organization for 26 years. So I have a little bit of knowledge of what's going on, I hope. Again, this is the beginning of the system redesign. If you go to the next slide, I'm going to show you what our system currently looks like. This has been what our system has looked like since we took over Rome VIP back in 2005. It is understandable to users who use it every day. But if you take a look at this system and you're not a user, it looks like a bowl of spaghetti. It's hard to understand, quite frankly. And some of the routes aren't consistent, like we would like public transit to be consistent. If you go to systems that have a high amount of success, a lot of straight line routes, consistent scheduling, and also services that go out and back on each other, rather than looping around, you know, five and nine that we have here. For some of our users, you understand the five goes out one way, the nine comes back the other way. You need to understand both schedules to make that work for you. So what we've done is we've taken a look at this system and just try to look at and try to make it more friendly, user-friendly, more efficient, more effective for our users. We are not the first organization to take a look at this and come up with the recommendations that we're going to talk about. Hox, one of the transportation agencies that here in Onida County, took a look at our system, they came up with generally the exact same concepts that we're rolling out as part of one of their studies they did back in 2018. Next, please. So this is the ridership by route. And this is important, this is something we track on a daily basis. We take a look at our ridership. And we have some pre-pandemic numbers compared to where we are today. We're down overall on the top there, about 29%, which is not bad. Considering that, for the most part, our overall system is down about the same amount. And it's something that I don't know if we're ever going to get back to 100% of where we were. Life is different than it was in 2019. Travel patterns have changed. More people work from remotely, there's more remote shopping being done. So there's a lot of reasons why ridership and public transportation across the nation is not where it was pre-2019. If you look at our routes, I would, you know, we've organized these by ridership per day. And these are individual rides, these are not individual people. If you look at this with the mindset of somebody going out someplace, is going to use the bus to come back. Our four and seven bus routes really are not performing very well, they have not performed well. And it's not really new. It's always been, those two routes have always been a little lagging behind the rest of the system. If you look at the four, Monday through Friday, we're doing 30 rides per day, it's about 15 people. The seven is half that, it's about nine, nine rides, nine people per day. And even on Saturdays and Sundays, the numbers even go a little bit further. So what we did is we took a look at those locations and how can we better serve those areas? Admittedly, the four and the seven don't have great amount of frequency of service. That affects usability. If the buses don't run very often, people won't use it because it doesn't meet their needs. But if you take a look at what the other routes have, they have anchors, they have a hospital, they have Walmart, they have Griffiths. And those are good anchors for public transportation, people use them on a regular basis. Next slide. This is what we call a heat map. And this shows you where boardings occur within our system on a regular basis. And how many do we get per day at these locations? The hub downtown at Liberty Street is obviously the big circle there. That's where people transfer, so there's naturally going to be a lot of activity there. Walmart is the number one destination within the system. It's not unlike any system that we have. In Syracuse, in Auburn, in Rome, in Utica, and in Oswego, Walmart is the number one destination of transportation. If you look, there's a little bit of activity along Dominic Street up to the northern segment. There's a lot of people using the service up there. And obviously over to the airbase, Griffiths, the airpark, and that area where we have a lot of usage. This little yellow circle down to the bottom there, ignore that, that is our bus garage. That's where bus drivers get on and off the bus regularly. So that's really, it's an internal ridership that really does a factor into what we're doing here. So we took a look at this area, this heat map, and said, okay, where are people using the buses? Obviously out to Walmart, up to the northern portion, and also along out to Griffiths. So we took a look at that and we said, okay, Hox will use this information to make things more efficient and still provide service to other parts of the community. One thing I want to say is it's very important to us. When we went into this endeavor, the first thing we wanted to make sure was that nobody would lose service. So anybody who has access to a bus now will have access to a bus. It may be a different style of bus transportation, but they'll have access. And also, we are not changing our dial ride, what we call Call of Us. Our Call of Us service will not be affected in any way, shape, or form. That will remain untouched. So individuals who use the system will still be able to use it the same way they currently use it and over the same hours and get to the same location. So that will not be impacted in any way, shape, or form. Next slide. So how are we looking to transform our transit network? Well, we're transitioning our bus system to a combination of fixed route, and that's the bus routes that the bus is always around that route, to a mobility on-demand service, kind of like Centro meets Uber, where you can have a bus that will be on-demand. Goals, provide more flexibility and options to riders of the Rome Transit System. Currently, if we have a bus that goes up Turn Street, you may be able to walk to it from a quarter mile away, but if you're out and further away from it in a location, you may not have access to a bus. This system will include the buffer all the way around Turn Street and other locations. So we're giving access to public transportation to more individuals. This system, as I said, has not been changed since 2005, since we took over. So we want to appropriately size the service for the Rome community. As it exists today, there's changes in populations, changes in mobility patterns. We do more responsive to community mobility needs. And we want to engage with the latest technology to maximize rider benefit, make it easier for people to use, and be more efficient of our transit resources. When you have a bus route that only carries nine people a day, that's not efficient use of your bus service. A mobility on-demand vehicle can carry eight to nine people an hour. So we're looking to increase some of our capacity. Again, as I said before, transit service will still be available to everyone who has it today. And with the MOD service, it will be accessible to new locations across the service area. And why does it need to be changed? Well, as I said, it's remained the same since the mid-'20s. Everything's evolved. We really want to increase ridership system-wide and increase the usability with improved travel times, more direct service, and also increase frequency of our existing remaining bus services. There's some repeat information. And the overall goal of the transformation, provide more attractive options to serve more destinations, to increase ridership, improve the customer experience, giving people some flexibilities and convenience, increase the service area through point-to-point. This is going to be a point-to-point mobility on-demand system. We'll get into more detail in a bit. And adjust the current service levels to fit the demand and travel patterns, maximize effectiveness for customers, and encourage economic development. And overall, we're trying to invest in fixed route resources where they can be most effective by the greatest level of benefit to our customers and to taxpayers. So what is mobility on-demand? It's a different type of service. What the traditional bus service is, it is I get a schedule, I look at the schedule, I go to a bus stop, I wait for a bus to get there, and I follow the schedule. This is like, we said, it's more like Uber. It is where, it's serviced when you want it, where you want it. It's often called microtransit. And it is a ride-sharing system where you, as an individual, can either order a ride by phone, you're going to be able to order a ride on a website, or we're going to roll out a mobile app where you'll have your own account and set it up like you would any type of ride-share service. Your fares can be prepaid with it on the app, if you connect a credit card to the app, or you can pay cash when you get on the vehicle as well. So we're not going to take away the cash option. We're going to use smaller vehicles that will be more mobile, get into the community easier. Sometimes when you have larger buses, they go down streets that whether they are narrow, it's intrusive, it bothers residents. We're going to try to not do that. We're going to keep the big buses on the big routes and the smaller buses on the on-demand system. And this is something that has been used, this has been rolled out in Rochester, Buffalo, and Albany. Very successful. As a matter of fact, it's almost too successful in some areas. And again, as I mentioned under proposed service changes, Call of Us service will not change at all in Rome. So this is what the new system would look like. The red, the green, and the gold would be what you consider your traditional fixed bus routes. Those buses will operate up and down those routes, those routes will have buses operating up and down. And we're going to increase the frequency on these bus routes. Currently, our pulse system in Rome is the bus comes every 45 minutes. We're changing that to 30 minutes. So we're going to get more trips per day on these bus routes. So I think we calculated, I think it was 41% more bus trips on these three routes. They will all pulse and meet together. They will all have the same length of time travel, which means that the buses will always be at the downtown transit hub at the same time every hour. 10 minutes before the hour, 20 minutes after the hour, 10 minutes before the hour, 20 minutes after the hour. It's really important to have that consistency so users can forget about a schedule. Once they figure out what the pulse is and when they need to be and where the bus comes by, their location, you can almost throw a schedule away. Outside of those three routes, nothing will be fixed route, it'll be all on-demand. That purple area, as you see here, that's the outline, that's the borders of where we currently operate Call of Us. We have the exact same border for our mobility on-demand system. So anyone who's in that, in the outer area, has access to the mobility on-demand system. The one caveat is, if you'll notice, there is a blue buffer that is around the fixed route system. We're putting a buffer around the fixed route system to encourage and sort of force individuals who live in this area, if you're going to travel from a location within that buffer to another location within that buffer, we're going to want you to use the fixed route system. So what we don't want is, we don't want a mobility on-demand system where everybody's using mobility on-demand system and those buses that are on the fixed route suddenly become empty. And now no one's using those buses. So we have to protect against having the mobility on-demand system sort of cannibalize our fixed route system. So there is going to be a buffer in an area where you're not going to be able to use the on-demand system. Now, if you live, say, somewhere near the John Joy Elementary School, and you currently use the Turn Street route, and you go to the hub, and it's a dollar ride to get to the hub, and then you want to go to Walmart, and it's a dollar ride to get to Walmart. We want to make sure that everyone still has the opportunity to still have the same price option available. So in this system, if you want to take an on-demand bus from your community up there, your neighborhood, and go to the hub, it's going to be a dollar. And then you would then transfer to a bus that would take you to Walmart. So you still have similar service, same price, probably more flexible for you because you can now have that bus come almost anytime you want. And if you live off the existing bus route, now you can have the exact same service. You can call and you can order that bus, it will take you to the hub for a dollar and take you to where you need to go in our system after you transfer. Part of the on-demand option, though, will be the ability to go directly to a location. You won't need to go to the hub. It would be a bus route that would take you, for example, from Mazafaros to Walmart. The proposed fare for that service is $4 one way, and then $4 back if you're going from a point to a point that is not within the fixed route system. That's part of the reason why we're here. We're here to discuss not just what the options are, but the pricing. So that is something that if you have a comment on that, we're more than welcome to hear back from you. And the hours of operation for this service will be the exact same hours of operations that we currently operate. So it would be 9 to 5 on Saturdays and 6 to 6 on weekdays. So we would keep the same operating hours for all of our buses, our bus services. And this plan actually increases the number of bus operators and buses that are on the street by, I think it's by one. Currently, in that spaghetti system I showed you in the beginning, there are four buses on the road, fixed route buses. This will have, this service right here will have three buses on the road just to provide those three routes so we can increase the frequency. And we'll have one to two on-demand buses available in the community. And that may have to grow. If demand grows, then we're going to try to grow the bus driver ranks and provide more services. So this is a starting point where we'd like to be. We think, again, it provides access to the entirety of the system. You don't need to live right next to a bus route to be able to use public transportation. And you don't have to be, you don't have to be on our schedule, we can be on your schedule. So if you need a bus to get you to Bethany Gardens at, you know, 10:12, and the current system gets you there at 9:40 or at 10:20, you now can get there at 10:05. So those are the types of things and flexibility we want to build into the system to make it easier for individuals to use. So here's the proposed fixed route service schedule as I talked about before. It is a half-hour service for all of our, what we call headways. It's a half-hour headway, which means there's a half hour in between every bus coming to that location. And they're consistent. And it's the same time every hour throughout the system. You don't need a schedule, it should be intuitive for many people. This is what we propose. Again, it's frequency is every 30 minutes. And it operates 24 trips per day, I think we're at 15 or something like that in Rome. So the on-demand service customers, again, would reserve rides using a mobile app, but we are going to be able to have a phone, ability to order by phone, similar to our Call of Us service. We're going to have software that's going to try to, it's really complex, an algorithm. The company that we're working with will try to combine rides and make the efficiency of vehicles as best they can to combine rides. You may be asked to walk to a specific pickup location where there may be two or three people waiting at the same location. It will not be that far of a walk, but it may be a little bit of a walk. It will not be door-to-door service, it's what we call point-to-point. Mobile phone payment will be an option. Again, you're not bound by fixed route schedule. There are smaller buses, and as I mentioned before, it's a dollar to downtown to the hub, $4 directly to a destination. In the lower right-hand corner there, we are going to call the service Move. And that is kind of sort of what we will have the buses look like. They'll be smaller vehicles, they'll be branded with the Centro logo on the front, but we're going to call the service Move. It's a little different from what we currently operate. And it gives people the ability to move from one location to another. And this is a sample of how the mobile app will look. You'll have the ability to create an account. It will, if you've ever used Uber or Lyft, it looks very similar. You book a ride, and then it will show you where the bus is as it's coming toward you. And you'll see where the location is and when the bus is on its way so you know that bus is actually going to where you're waiting for the bus. And at some point, we will have, if this gets approved, we will have information sessions available specifically. We know we're going to reach out to senior centers and other community groups that request some information and some travel training for that, we've had to term. So we make sure that everyone understands how the mobile app works. And we're going to do some internal training as well before we kick this service off. The timeline for it, the Centro Board hopefully will approve or they will make some determinations in January. We'll begin internal training in February for a March 2024 rollout. It sounds like a tight timeline. I can tell you that the company we're working with called Via looked at our timeline and they went, eh, no big deal, we can roll this out in three weeks if you need to. So they're very confident in what their ability is to roll the service out. Okay. Now, I've been talking. Any questions, any comments, any thoughts? Yes?
So you mentioned that this type of rollout has happened in Rochester and other areas. Is this the first time Centro was doing it?
Yeah. Yeah. This is the first time that we're proposing something like this. We chose Rome because we thought it kind of, because of the route network, it was a good opportunity here, I thought it was. There were some routes that weren't performing well. And I know it's a combination of a lot of things, but I thought if you have a community where now you have that ability to take your resources and put them probably into more efficient use, it'll work. Rochester is working with the same company that we are working with now. Initially, they worked with a different company and quickly pivoted to the one that we're working with because things weren't going so well in the beginning. So that software is critical to the success of the service because it is the heartbeat of what's going on. It's amazing what it can do. I'll say that it will take, in minutes, will take requests, reallocate the driver's manifest, and then redirect drivers. They may be redirected on the fly where they're going to a location, and suddenly they have to make a left-hand turn, a right-hand turn, pick somebody else up, and then go where they're going again. So it's really that reactive. Yes?
Well, them buses, the Move buses, have the capability to help people with disabilities?
Absolutely.
With wheelchairs?
Absolutely.
Scooters and all that?
Oh, scooters, yes.
Yes. We will make sure that that, this is, everything we do has to be ADA compliant. So we'll make sure that everyone has access. Yes?
I have a question. What about the people who don't have a phone, how are they going to use the Move?
If they don't have a mobile phone, you can call us, literally call us on any phone, and we'll have a phone number set up so you can call and order a ride.
And can you can set like, ahead of time, like you can schedule, can you pick me up here? Like if you're outside of the usual heartbeat zone, as you said?
Yeah.
You can schedule them to pick you up there and then get to the hub to go to Walmart and yada, yada.
Correct, yeah.
And then can you schedule a Move bus from the hub to drop you off back around where your house is?
Yeah, yeah.
Like ahead of time before you can set up a bus?
Absolutely, yeah, you can set that all up in advance, yeah.
Now, you had said something about during your pop-up about taking over the Utica-Rome line. What's going to happen with that?
That is, that is different. That is the rural service you're talking about?
Yes.
We are still in the process of getting things finalized for a rural transit service that is outside of this. It would potentially operate from Utica to Rome to the Turning Stone and back initially. That's still being looked at, still being worked on. We're not there yet.
Because Bernie is getting really crazy with his strategy.
We understand.
I also have a question, please.
Yeah.
Oh, I should have rested him, sorry. When does the Move, like timeline, like when is the Move buses also like available? Is it also 6 to 6?
Yeah, yeah. There may be some, we're trying, we're working with a company now of, if you want to order a ride that technically gets you to a location before 6 o'clock PM, but we might not be able to accommodate that, so there's going to be a little bit of wiggle room in there.
Because I know a lot of workers in there will start going to work around like 6-ish.
Good question.
Are you going to make out new bus schedules?
There will be new schedules that will come out, absolutely, for the new buses.
There's another question.
Yeah.
Are you still going to have the bus passes?
Yes, yes. We will still have the bus passes.
How is this going to work for the people who have the reduced fare?
They'll have a reduced fare option on the Move bus as well.
Okay, so they won't, if they have the reduced fare option, they won't have to pay the toll?
Correct, yeah. Yeah, the question was, are you still going to have passes? And are you still going to have reduced fare for the service? We will still have our bus passes for fixed route. And we still will have a half fare for people who use the on-demand service. So that's still, again, everything we do has to be ADA compliant. And one of the compliance issues is that we must have a half fare option for people who are disabled. Thoughts, questions?
Doesn't it sound terrible?
Okay.
Sounds easier to work with, the schedule-wise, with more accessibility.
Okay.
Okay, you did say that the number of drivers aren't going to change, aren't going to be decreased?
No, nope, nope. If anything, I think we're adding potentially, I don't know if we're adding, I don't know. But it will not decrease.
Okay. Hey Steve, I want to make a comment. This is kind of very exciting for the authority. We service four upstate counties, multiple cities, townships, et cetera. And I'm proud that Rome is going to be the first one to really receive this service. I'm happy being the Onida County representative. Really happy that we started in my home here to put this service out. And there might be some challenges in the beginning. But I know Steve and his team has done a great job, put a lot of time into this to make sure we have the best experience for our customers. And Rome is the first one in our authority, and that's something to be very proud of.
We're excited. You know, it's something, as Nick said, it's something that is, it's the wave of the future for public transportation. The traditional get a schedule, walk out to a bus corner type of service is frowned upon by the next generation of transit riders, let's put it that way. They would rather have a phone, a mobile app, and the ability to have it now, rather. Be on my schedule, not on your schedule. So that's where transit is going. As a collective industry, we're all moving in this general direction. And we'll see how it works out. I mean, I'm very confident it's going to be popular, yes?
So I know, for example, you had a Spanish interpreter here today. What kind of language assistance are you offering on the app or the website or if somebody calls for a ride and they don't speak very good English?
We have Spanish, we have actually have a language interpretation line. So if you call our call center and you don't speak English, we have the ability to call a third party to then help us out with translation. Our website translates into many, many languages, it's just automatic. And then if there are, if something occurs during the course of the business, we do the best we can to provide service and get through it. It's not a perfect system, but it works very well. And I know there's a lot of individuals who, from different backgrounds within, not just this community, but all of our communities as well. Yes?
Are these changes going to take our require county council change?
We are, we are a transit authority, so we are our own entity.
So you're contracted with the city?
No, we are not contracted with the city.
No, not paid by the city?
No, no.
The relationship is, years ago, I'm actually from the old Utica Transit Authority on that board. Years ago, at a failing public transportation that we had in the greater Utica area, and we wanted to also enhance what Rome had to offer. So it's a state authority, it's really Onida County. It's really with Onida County, not with, like, years ago, they had separate relationships with Utica, Kirkland, White'sboro, Hartford, all that. It's much different now, it's through the county.
So any legislation required goes through Hox? So any legislation required to go through Hox, then? Or you won't need legislation at all to change any of this?
No.
We're required to go through public hearing, get public comment, follow all the federal regulations as far as when transit routes are changed. Those are the requirements that we're bound by. Well, obviously, we want to be good neighbors and be good partners and let everybody know, and if there's any issues, we will certainly be able to come to the table and chat about that.
And then management brings it to the governing board of Central, of the whole. And then those decisions are approved.
So Nick, the city doesn't contribute anything to Central anymore?
How it goes is the county has the funds that are given to the authority. So the relationship, if there's any with the county or the towns or whatever, those are with the county. But the county has the relationship with the authority. We like to take, you know, we like to take information on any time we make improvements, adjustments, whatever. It's important that the folks that use the system have the input because we're analyzing this the best we can, but it's here for the residents. It's here for them.
Any other thoughts? Any other thoughts on the fares?
Are they going to just stay the same for only 2024 or will they change them?
No, we're going to establish these fares. They're going to be pretty stable for a little bit. Yep. Yep. We really do not like to mess with fares too much unless we really have to. We're not in a position right now where we have to do that.
That's good.
Yeah, it is. From our perspective, it's very good as well. Does anybody have any official comments they would like to put on the record for public hearing? I think we have the questions as well. Any other going once? Going twice? Okay, I'm going to officially close the public hearing. Thank you all for your participation. If you have any other questions, we'll be around to hang out and answer any other questions you may want to ask on a one-on-one basis. Thank you very much for everybody being here.
Thank you.
Thank you.